We're going to call the meeting to order. I want to be respectful of everyone's time and I appreciate everybody who is here today. I know that this is a lot of useful information that's going to help a lot of our needed community members, so I look forward to the findings and I also look forward for the community to know what it is we're working on, just because people don't really know the behind the scenes until the city council meeting happens and we're voting on things, so it's nice to have the study session and be able to highlight some key things that we need to emphasize on, so I will give you the floor.
Okay.
Yes, Ms. Karen is going to be going first.
Well, thank you and welcome, everyone. I am Karen Billowith, I'm the president and CEO of Erie Community Foundation, so I think I've met most of you previously, and we're going to talk about a strategy that is finally in an implementation phase, but we've been working on this collaboratively for about a year and a half, maybe close to two years, and before getting into the details of it, I think what is most innovative about our strategy and really effective is that it's a public-private and philanthropic partnership, so we have been working with representation from the city, from the county, from foundations and community partners for that entire time, and I want to recognize Renee Lamas for her involvement since inception, and many other, actually the mayor has been at some of our meetings, also the county executive and Lana joined our team most recently, so, you know, she's sitting back behind me. So, thank you for this time. Just to kick it off, I think we're going to go through this slideshow, is that the plan? Which really talks about what it is, but when I talk about this Housing First Erie and its importance, at its basis, it's really, it's a strategy to create permanent supportive housing for our most vulnerable residents, and that in itself is a worthy effort, but it's really important and timely because it was recognized as a priority in Infinite Erie's investment playbook, it's been on the agenda of the business community for many years, so you, we don't have to talk about why it's important, but it really falls within this range of a housing continuum that we at the Community Foundation have been really interested in over the past several years, because in addition to supportive housing that we're talking about tonight, we also have a need in our community to create more affordable housing and market rate housing, so we look at it in the whole continuum for how do we make our community a better place, and I think that's where I will turn it over to Boo, because that kind of defines our interest at the Community Foundation in this work, and alongside of me the entire time has been Boo Hagerty and the Hammett Health Foundation and UPMC, kind of helping to lead this work.
Thank you, Karen, and hello, everyone. Thank you very much for having, thank you, I appreciate that. I'm Boo Hagerty, President of the Hammett Health Foundation, and we got involved in this early, just because it is a healthcare crisis, without a doubt, and as our foundation has really spent a lot of time focused on the social determinants of health, housing being one of them, supportive housing bubbled up as something that we actually think is low-hanging fruit and something that we could move on maybe a lot faster than other communities because we had such great collaboration, and I think it's worth repeating how quickly we were able to align all the right people in the room from day one to say, "It's only going to happen if we all work together and we all pull the oars together and we all see this as a problem and chronic homelessness is an epidemic," without a doubt, but in Erie we had a chance to really fix it because the numbers from Lana and John Di Matteo and their team were not insurmountable, you know, somewhere in the neighborhood of 150 people in our community are chronically homeless, that's more than a year without a place to live. What we've done in this process is, and you'll meet Wyatt tonight, is hired a national expert on this, and, you know, history is important, Karen and Wyatt worked together on this in Boise, so Karen has an incredible experience doing this in one market, and she brought her expertise to here, so you bring Karen's expertise, you bring the strength of UPMC and UPMC Hammett, our Hammett Health Foundation, you bring the strength of the community, and all of a sudden you can move the needle on this, and it's been great. We won't get into this too much in the PowerPoint, but we have run focus groups with the very people we want to help house, and they have told us loud and clear where they want to be, what their apartments want to look like, need to look like. Tonight it's personal for me, because one of the guys that I've met in the focus group passed away last week, natural causes in his sleep, and I know that if we would have been maybe a year ahead of ourselves, he'd still be here with us, so as we're thinking about this, I want the name Greg Davidson to be in all our heads, it's in my head, because Greg is a guy you probably saw, you know, walking in downtown Erie, and he's a real gentle, good man, but the battle was lost for him, but so many others like Greg, we've got to win this battle and get these folks a great supportive place to live and the key is supportive services, so we're in this for the long haul, we're happy to be here, we're so privileged to be in front of you tonight to talk about this, and I think the smartest thing we can do is get into the details with Wyatt and allow you to just, let's have this be a dialogue, throw questions out in real time, if there's things you want to address in real time, and certainly we'll have plenty of time for Q and A as well. So, I'll kick it to Wyatt Schrader, who is with our, I don't call him a consultant, he is a partner of ours, and he has done an incredible job of really leading this charge and leading this community, and he tackles it with a great resume, understanding this from every sector that it belongs in, from policy to government to public and private, so I pass it over to Wyatt.
Thank you, Boo, thank you, Karen. Members of council, it's great to be in front of you. Yeah, like Boo said, please, please jump in with questions as we get to it, but we'd love to talk about some of the philosophical underpinnings that are behind the work of Housing First Erie, and then after going through just what this model is, we'll talk about some of the data that we worked through with the county to understand that number that Boo already teed up, that 150, where is that coming from, what is that, who are those folks that we're referring to, and what do they most need? And then we'll walk into our goals that we saw are really focused on, Housing First Erie, and ultimately get into where I think we probably spend most of our time, which is Washington Square. Our first phase of this work to prove out this concept of permanent supportive housing in the community of Erie, 72 units that we're hoping to come online in the next three years. So, that's what we'd love to walk through, but all this is coming as part of a larger partnership, you know, called Infinite Erie, so you see in this first slide that there's a whole continuum of need around the issue of housing, everything from how does someone get into their first home that they own, how do we invest in that missing middle of a duplex here, a triplex there, but really for the focus of Housing First Erie, we're on the left side of this continuum, trying to help people who are tonight living outside, who are going to shelter tonight, who are sleeping in cars, who are experiencing what we call literal homelessness, how do we help them get into a safe and stable and permanent housing, so they can overcome the trauma of living on the street? So, where we've kind of attacked this issue just across the nation is really moving towards this philosophy of housing first. Now, it's probably something you've heard about, but I want to take a minute just for anyone listening who maybe is new to the idea of housing first, of where it's coming from. For me, a lot of my work started on the issue of family homelessness, and so a lot of my early work in domestic violence shelters and otherwise, we really like to see this through the eyes of a child. So, as you probably know, 90% of our brains develop in the first five years, 90%. So, if during those first five years we're experiencing severe levels of trauma, like homelessness, if I grow up my first two or three years in shelter, my brain architecture wires to assume that I'll always be in fight or flight mode. Now, the impacts on our mental health are severe, including increasing our likelihood that we'll grow up with depression to 466% more likely than the regular population. It also has impacts on our physical health, we're three times more likely to contract some kind of autoimmune disease, we see also our life expectancy go down by 20 years if we grow up in a unsheltered environment. So, the costs of homelessness on the health of a human are very, very high, like we're learning with Greg. And so, the idea that if we, as a community, this is what we were doing since the 80s, we were asking people to go through a lot of steps before they would get into a permanent place where they could be safe and secure. We were creating transition points, we were adding time to that clock that you can picture through the eyes of a child, and we were doing it through a lot of well-intentioned thoughts, that people need to transition to housing, they need to be ready for housing, they need to earn that housing. Well, the concept of housing first came along in the 90s and said, "That's actually not correct from a psychological point of view." If you think about Maslow's higher give needs, at the bottom is that safety is what they would call shelter. Now, Maslow's calling shelter, we would call it permanent housing, you need a place where that transition stops. So, then Housing First is asking all of us as community leaders, how can we quickly get someone who's currently staying tonight in a car, how can we quickly get them to end that transition? Now, this is not to say we don't need crisis response, we absolutely do, so I want to applaud the city for its crisis car and its work on adding behavioral health competency to your police department, I want to compliment Lana and the county for thinking about how we can have a more humane approach to crisis stabilization with some of the shelter work that we're doing, that's always needed. Unfortunately, it's not likely that we're going to be able to completely transfer someone from the first day they're experiencing homelessness to a permanent home, though that would be great, but we should be asking ourselves, how can we speed up that process so that if someone comes to shelter tonight, we can get them into permanent housing as quickly as possible? So, that's the philosophical underpinning of Housing First, and the reality is that it works. Housing First has been national policy since President George W. Bush's administration, and it's been implemented in different ways across the country, and I want to highlight some stats, and these stats are both things that we are seeing in the research, but they're also promises that we are orienting Housing First Erie around. Right now, we see across the country that if people go to shelter and don't get any other programming, they're able to find permanent housing and be stable, usually about 10% of the time. If you go through a Housing First program and get rapidly given permanent housing and intensive supportive services, 85% of the time, we expect you to be stably housed a year later. So, the increase in outcomes is huge, and we would expect that as well for Washington Square, we would hope that our services are as effective as possible so that we don't see many people moving out, that they're with us until they're healthy and stable. We also see almost 100% of people engaging in those services, we also see a cost avoidance per person. Now, as you can imagine, if you're living on the street tonight, you're, and I'm sure Renee and others behind me can tell these stories, if you're living on the street tonight, you're using the ambulance as a taxi, you're using the ER as a motel bed, and that cost is getting borne by the budget that you worked diligently on every year, is getting borne by our taxpayers. So, the cost of experiencing homelessness, chronic homelessness, is roughly around $50,000 per person per year. Again, that's without seeing any positive increases in their health, but if we house people through a Housing First approach, we can see up to $30,000 in cost avoidance, because people are using jail less, using the ER less, using paramedics' time, and police less. So, it's built, this idea of Housing First is built on a lot of evidence, and that's the first thing that we started talking about whenever these two pulled together this original project team and said, like, "Hey, we, let's really focus on the data and let's learn the things we can learn, but we don't have to start from scratch." And so, I want to give, Karen, if you want to talk about this, this group that you first pulled together to really tackle this issue, do you want to describe this project team?
I will, and truly, it started with a conversation that came out of one of the mayor's business council meetings, and that was probably about two, two years ago at this point, where there was a lot of discussion about the perceived increase in homeless people downtown, and that was when EDDC was getting started, so there was a lot of concern, and there was a conversation with myself and Boo and Lori Root from United Way and a couple of other people who said, "This is a challenge for our community, and like Wyatt said, it's a community issue that we all have to come together and solve, but each of our institutions has a vested interest in this, so how can we begin the conversation?" And I'm really pleased to say that we invited representatives from all of these people you see on the slide, all of these institutions, to come to a meeting, they all showed up, and they all kept showing up, so we call it a coalition of the willing. People kept coming together every single month to begin to talk about what is it that can be done in Erie, and that's, early on, we brought Wyatt into the conversation just to talk about an example from another community, and almost immediately, we honed in on, "This is the solution that we're looking for, but what does it look like in Erie?" So, that's what we're going to talk about more today, but as I said earlier, it's public institutions, private foundations, and the business community has been really interested in this as well, so I just think that's a great demonstration of Erie's kind of power to come together.
All right. I want to punctuate top left, which is the Erie Home Team, and the Erie Home Team are all the organizations in this space currently who are doing exceptional work but having a hard time on their own keeping up with those who are chronically unhoused. The shelters are great, and you talk about Mercy Center for Women and the work they're doing in Yuma and community shelter, and you could just go on and on about all the organizations that support in so many different ways. So, the Erie Home Team was well-represented so that their views can be sought, and maybe initially they felt like this might feel competitive to what they were doing, and we were really open and honest and transparent about that, to say, "This is additive," and I think that's a word that Karen used early and often, to say that we need to add 150 units. We have a housing crisis in our community that we have to tackle from a bunch of different ends, and I don't have to tell city council that, but these added 150 apartments, we'll start with about 72, is going to enhance all their other services, so this group of people who came together, others came in as we moved along, have absolutely been working very well together. I've been in the community a long time, and I've seen groups of people come together for a good purpose and for whatever reason splinter and fracture, and that hasn't been the case here, so we're happy about that.
Yeah, and I think just to add to that, related to the Erie Home Team and all of the organizations working in the community already, one of the things that I'm not sure is in the presentation is that generally speaking, and I think it's true in Erie County as well, probably 80 to 85% of people who go through the shelter system and receive services at all of these different organizations, end up in housing within a certain period of time. So, the system actually works really well for more than the majority of people experiencing homelessness. However, this population that we'll talk about tonight, those that are defined as chronically homeless, but really people who, as Wyatt said, have been unhoused for more than a year, that system isn't working for those individuals, so this is actually filling a gap, it's not competitive, it's not redundant, we need all of those organizations because they all have a role and a purpose, and that's what we've tried to keep, we've tried to keep the engagement with the Erie Home Team, but I've been talking about that a lot because we, at the Community Foundation, work with a lot of different individual donors who say, "Well, what about Mercy Center, or what about this organization?" And the answer is, we need to support all of these organizations.
And this, a key word in this whole process has been no barrier, like, we cannot discriminate based on religion, based on gender, based on sexual orientation, based on any sort of chronic disease you might have, based on any behavioral criminal record, no barrier, everyone's welcome and everyone's accepted, so.
Yeah, I'll stick into that number, because we've used it a couple of times, so I appreciate you bringing that up, Karen, because, yeah, this slide doesn't say this, but around 400 people every single year, 400 households, do get housed after experiencing homelessness, so 400, that's huge, and so that's on the back of a lot of good work of our local government and nonprofit sector here, and this is not frankly uniquely an Erie story. As we started this convenient, and one of the questions I ask every community is, "Where do you want to prioritize? Where do you want to start?" Homelessness is varied, it's complex, and there are a lot of sub-populations that need a specific kind of approach, so where do you want to start? And it was very clear early on, like, "What does the data say?" And Erie, I think, is seeing what a lot of communities are seeing, which is those with the highest level of need are the most difficult population for us to get into housing. Now, that's not because they're doing anything wrong, a lot of it is because we're not designing a certain kind of housing for them or with them. And so, once we looked at the data, we saw somewhere about like 125 households every year in Erie County are experiencing long-term homelessness, so think of homelessness, long-term being roughly about a year. And some folks are getting housed, as you can see during that time, about, let's say, 25% are getting housed of that group, but that means there's somewhere around 90 to 100 that are not getting housed, who are experiencing that chronic homelessness. So, again, these are people who are experiencing homelessness for at least a year and have a disabling condition of some kind, be it physical, mental, or suffering with addictions. So, that's that population, that gap population we were thinking about, so every year it's roughly about 90 to 100, and so over a couple of years it becomes about 150, and so we thought that could be our planning number of working backwards, of trying to scale our approach. Now, like we mentioned before, Housing First suggests the idea of, "Well, what's the housing?" That we need shelter, yes, that serves a role, we need a crisis response system, that serves a role, but not an ideal system of care, what we start saying is, "Don't think left to right, think right to left," which is right now, if we have a broken housing system, which we do, if we have a continually appreciating rent, it gets harder and harder, the goalpost is moving away from us, we have to go and grab it, we have to start with the housing market in mind and develop a certain number of units and bring that housing market to some level of justice for these 150 people who are living tonight in shelter on the street. And so, that's where we, as there's work that Lana and others are leading around the crisis system, we want Housing First Erie to focus on the actual housing side of the coin, and using a specific model called permanent supportive housing. So, as you probably know, you're all in city council dealing with complicated things every single meeting, doing permanent supportive housing sounds great, it's a thing that advocates have been asking for, for now a full generation in most communities, but this slide is just to suggest that once we committed to this strategy of looking at 150 permanent supportive housing units for the 150 people experiencing chronic homelessness, you start to open the hood and realize there's a lot of work to do, that you need to figure out what those housing units are, where are they, are you building new, are you renovating, you need to figure out what your intensive supportive services look like, it's not enough to refer someone, we want to bring services to you, which is another Housing First approach, we want to be what's called assertive, so we're not giving you a number to call, we're bringing someone to your door. But then we also need to think about property management, and then obviously, things cost money, so what's our capital approach to build things, where are we getting our services funding, how are we paying for rent through rental assistance, and then ultimately, what's our partnership approach to manage all of these partners it takes to pull this off? So, the process of taking Greg and going back in time and putting him into housing, unfortunately, is complicated, and so what I appreciate about what became Housing First Erie is the willingness to handle complication and to figure this out. So, Boo, I'll ask you if you don't mind, that ultimately led us to take that approach and to create these three goal areas.
Yeah, so, goal one, address chronic homelessness, find a way to get 150 people housed as fast as we can, and Washington Square, we've alluded to that a couple of different times, we have purchased the property, that was the Erie School District Building, that was, been in the news, so 22nd and Sassafras and over to Peach, and we believe we can get 72 units on that property. We need to dedicate 75 community housing units around the community scattered site, if you will, and we have an integrated care team that has, that will be launched, that will take care, to Wyatt's point where they come to the door every day, I mean, that's sometimes what it will take to be assertive and to say, "It's time for your appointment, it's time for this, and we'll take them to the appointments, bring the appointment to them, whatever it takes." And the resident knows, and this is their apartment, this is their home, they have a key, it's their place, but they know part of the requirement is they have to receive these services. They want to go a couple of weeks and blow it off, and they're just having a bad couple of weeks, we've got to be accepting of that, but at the same time, we have to stay with them the whole time, certainly support a longtime community partnership and put a governance together, and we have to sustain this, I mean, there's a lot of money that needs to be raised, and a lot of that money doesn't necessarily have to come from this community, we'd like, you know, we'd like the community to support this, but there's national and other grants, so Infinite Erie and, under Karen's leadership with Infinite Erie, will form this investment fund that, so we can sustain this moving forward, but the partners, and if you flip to the next page, the partners that are involved in this, and I think it's important for city council to know, it's a very democratic process of who was chosen to be our partners moving forward, and the first is, how do we take a permanent location, and we went to Cleveland and found CHN Housing Partners out of Cleveland, am I doing this, and is this my slide?
Go for it.
Or am I wrong?
No, great.
Okay, all right, so Cleveland Housing Partners, we went and visited, you know, they were one of five organizations nationally and locally that entered the RFQ to say, "Do you qualify for this?" Cleveland does not have a chronic homelessness problem like other communities because they've adopted this model, they build these beautiful apartment buildings in neighborhoods, they've become a fabric of the community, we've toured them, we've seen them, they're pristine, they're perfect, and they're exactly what we need, we left there saying, "This is what we need here." So, they were chosen as the partner to build a permanent site, so they will work with us together to build a permanent site on the parking lot of that property, and that was a great acquisition in terms of a partner who really wants to work with us on that. The second is, who's that backbone agency? Our foundation and the board at the Hammett Health Foundation has been so committed to this that they allowed us to start a brand-new community development corporation called Build, and we are in our infancy, really, we're not even a year old yet, but we are the owner of the property, and we will develop the 22 apartments that will go inside the school, so instead of taking that school and knocking it down, let's use it useful, and it's a beautiful building, and we've looked at it, and we think we can get 22 apartments, so between the brand-new building we build and the apartments we can build inside the school, that's about 72 units that we think, that number could change here or there depending on when we fit everything out. And then, a very important part of this is UPMC, Western Sykes Behavioral Health at Safe Harbor, so the team at Safe Harbor, and they work really close with your crisis unit, Dr. Mandy Fabel and her team have been chosen as supportive service partners, they will have, they will have behavioral health counselors, drug and alcohol counselors, they will connect the residents to the physical health needs, and what we'll be able to do in a couple of years' time, it's going to take time, as Wyatt said, this is very complex and complicated, is we'll be able to, at that location, get those 72 people. I really want to emphasize, we've been very transparent, we've talked to neighbors before we bought the property to say, "This is our intent, and this is what we're going to do." That was a public bid, and we were one of the very few bidders on that property. Next week, October 10th, we have already sent an email, and we're going to meet with the neighbors, send an email, say we're going to be in the building and come in, and let's have a study session with you, you know, ask your questions, you know, any concerns you have, we will, we will address them. What we have found in Cleveland is the residents of these apartments are great neighbors, and they've blended in really well with the community, so that's a bit of the framework. I will be quiet and pass it back to you guys, but I feel like we're talking a lot at you, and you're really, really, really attentive, I appreciate that, because you guys sit through these things all the time. But we have a lot of expectations of ourselves, that's the next slide.
And we come back to the expectations if we get into it, we've mentioned a lot of them, and you've got them in front of you, I want to say this quickly before we get back to what's next, of, we know that 72 is not 150, but as we got into this, we need to really dig into these first two developments, and so, huge thank you to Boo and the Hammett Health Foundation for securing this site of what we're calling Washington Square, and so, together it'll be 72 units, and then after we kind of get to a certain level of construction, we'll come back to this planning team and say, "Okay, what's the right approach for the other 75?" But just as a reminder, we think if we house the next three years, these 72, that would reduce chronic homelessness by at least half, which we'd be obviously very excited to see that little progress.
And we're not asking council for the $28 million if you're adding this up, just 26, Mel, that's all, so.
I'm sad to tell you, we don't have it.
I'm kidding, I'm kidding, I'm kidding, I'm kidding. We have a really good plan to build this capital stock, I'm totally kidding you.
Well, pause here, I know we've kind of just introduced this, of, again, we're looking at the renovation at the current EST admin building, will become schoolhouse apartments, and then we'll be going through a process called the Low Income Housing Tax Credit to try to build a 50-unit apartment building on that same, and then, home base for our supportive services, which will be Safe Harbor, we'll be hiring a new team that'll be working with the residents on these 72 units, and they're working from that location, so they'll be right there, they won't have to be necessarily driving around all throughout the county to find folks, they'll just knock on the door. And lastly, we're working with both the county and the city housing authority to identify pathways towards rental assistance, so we're still in those negotiations right now. Anybody else on this?
No.
And then our approach to funding, so, the process has started, and Karen may turn this back over to you, but we're looking at these, obviously as three kind of separate divisions of labor that we have to focus on and their own individual funding stack. we're looking at these, obviously, as three kind of separate divisions of, of labor that we have to focus on and their own individual funding stack. But we're doing this as a partnership, and that's also something I'm seeing as very different from some of my work elsewhere. For instance, when Karen and I were doing this work, um, in Boise, Idaho, and we were trying to work on the first Housing First building in Idaho, all of our focus just went on one building, because that was enough to teach us. Um, but then after we finished, there was no necessarily next thing. We weren't sure what that was, and we had to pull the partners back together. Here, we're working backwards from, what does a pipeline look like? How can we build momentum and keep that momentum? How can we build infrastructure and rely on it? And so, we're looking at a, a large price tag, but a lot of that is coming hopefully through our low-income housing tax credits to build those fifty units. And we have a gap roughly of about five million or so, um, there of, uh, for that building, um, beyond the tax credits, and as things we already identified, two-point-five of that. So we have a small gap that we're confident we can help fill, um, for that new building. And the renovation was ultimately, uh, new in the process of, once the site was identified, like, oh, there's a building on this site. What would it look like to renovate that? And so, uh, Boo and the Build team are, are leading us on, trying to find the right funding stack for that. And then for services, um, I'm not gonna lie in the sense that supportive services are some of the toughest dollars to get. The nice thing is that we're in a very specific moment in time with our relationship to Medicaid. I will not bore you with all the details of a Medicaid eleven-fifteen waiver that's coming down the pike, but just know that any behavioral, behavioral health specialist who's listening to my voice knows to be excited. That there are some things coming down through the federal government and the state that might help to fill this gap. But we're not gonna take anything for granted. We're gonna use our charitable fundraising power, um, to basically build an investment fund that can backstop the gaps of our capital and also contemplate long-term services needs. Karen, do you want to talk anything about like the Infinite Erie's role on this fund?
Sure. I, I think you covered it really well, and the challenge for private and philanthropic support is really to, as Wyatt said, to fill the gaps. So, we have a bit of a chicken and egg because we have to identify the public sources before we can leverage as much private support as we think, but we need that private support also to leverage the, um, the public support. So we're going back and forth with that. But through Infinite Erie, we're creating a broader, really, like a strategic investment fund for our community that can be used both as gap filling, not only for this project, for the other projects in the playbook. So, um, going out and asking our community, our businesses, our foundations to be able to put money into that strategic investment fund, so we're really flexible and ready when we have opportunities like this. And the community foundation has already committed two-point-five million dollars in loan funding and two-point-five million dollars in grant funding to this investment fund. And that's a key part of it, is some of the funds will be used as grants, and some can be used as low-interest, no-interest loan, gap funding. So, really flexible to be at the ready when we need to put in the application, for example, for the low-income tax credits.
And our foundation's committed a million already. We have a million to buy the property and close on that property, and I think it's important for everyone to know that we can't even apply for Lytec grants unless we have site control. And, and by the way, the site control has to check a lot of criteria that Lytec has, which this property has. We looked at a number of different properties in the community. This one checked a lot of the boxes and was in our price range. We've also committed an additional half a million dollars that is gonna have to be used in the beginning for soft costs with architects and and engineering and all those things. So, um, so far, we're in for a million. And, um, I think, you know, we're gonna probably have to do more, and we know that. But I, I think Karen's point is really worth hitting home on, is as the public money comes, the private money comes a little bit easier when you find those matched dollars and things like that. And there are individual philanthropists that see this as a project that is very, very worthwhile to this community. Not just to get people out of Perry Square and off the street, but to really have the dignity and respect given back to them that they so rachely deserve. So, uh, that's what we're doing. You know, so.
And I want to say this, and a point of pride for Erie, um, I work in a couple other communities around Pennsylvania. And right now, there's a federal opportunity for us to, as Erie, apply for five million dollars for a permanent supportive housing project. And Renee, if you're listening, we were the only ones that applied locally, so we feel very confident we can put together a good application to send to the feds. I'm working in Pittsburgh, our second-largest county. We're not able to find a partnership like that to respond to that federal grant. I'm working in Montgomery County, our third-largest county. We're not able to find a partnership to respond. So a lot of Pennsylvania counties, our biggest counties, are not able, not able to respond to this once-in-a-lifetime, in my career, federal, uh, opportunity, because there's not a partnership like this. So Erie has been getting ready, and is, now gets to be a little opportunistic, as it proverbially looks under every single couch cushion, every single rug, for every single dollar that can help us and Erie end homelessness. So with that, we'll open up, what questions or feedbacks do we have from council?
I, I guess I just have a few comments before I give the floor to the other council members. Um, I just know that in the last four years, our community has faced a lot of rent price increases, which probably helps factor in the year or more of chronic homelessness. Um, I know that when you have to prove three times your income to even qualify for an apartment, it gets kind of hard. Might be why people are living in their cars. Um, I don't know how we, as a third-class city, can get ahead of that, but until we can somehow mitigate the rent increases, I think we're gonna have a bigger chronic homeless problem. I mean, our community is very helpful towards the unhoused community, so I feel like they are attracted to our city, and a lot of the services are within walking distance downtown. So I don't think we're ever gonna get rid of the homeless community from Perry Square or from public spaces. Um, I had a vacation in California, I was in the Santa Monica Pier, and they have literally criminalized being homeless. And when you talk about the mental conditions, America doesn't have very good healthcare for people, so it's like, there's a lot of underlying issues that contribute to this. And I just know that we want to attract ten thousand people here, but are currently, our residents are living in subpar housing. So the housing that is available to our own residents is a bit of a problem, so we have that issue as well. So I just, there are a lot of different things, and I'm happy that we're somehow finding a way to build seventy-two new units so that at least the most chronicled community members will have something. But there's so many connected factors that it just seems like it's gonna be a lot more of us working together as a whole to try to find the solutions.
Yeah. I will not. Can I make a comment on that?
Yeah, go ahead.
Because I think it's very astute. One of the reasons we started our, our community development corporation is also to be focused on affordable housing. And because it is a healthcare crisis for people not to live in quality, affordable housing. So, we're with you a hundred percent on that. That could be our next study session, because I'm with you.
Well, and, and I would just add to that, that we started off with the housing continuum slide, so Infinite Erie is really focused on the two left-hand columns, the supportive housing and affordable housing, because that's where we can have a plan to address, um, neighborhood development, community development, and keep affordable housing. But also, we also need market housing, you know, we need it all to be a healthy community. So I think there is alignment of effort around that. And I know that the, excuse me, the City of Erie is looking at, um, doing a housing strategy, and we want to be partners in that work as well. So we are looking at it more broadly than just this topic that we're talking about today.
Yeah, very much. I, I was fortunate enough to present to a lunch group today, this, this very, um, program. And a guest came up to me afterwards, and he's a forty-year, um, epidemiology professor at Emory University Atlanta. He was there with his brother, and he's visiting Erie. And he said, I want to applaud you for not criminalizing homelessness, but medicalizing it, which is a new term I'm going to be using a lot. You're medicalizing homelessness. And I, um, and he said, I've not seen this in other communities I've gone to, and I applaud you, and I'm gonna keep, keep an eye on what you're doing in Erie. So, I love that you said not criminalize homelessness, so thank you for saying that.
Yeah, because, um, my, it opened up my eyes when I was in Santa Monica, that at least in our community, we try to take care of our community.
Chief Bizzarney is behind us, and his team is fantastic, and they need to be really applauded for how they really address this in the community.
Such a buildup that grabbed my mic, I'm sorry. So here, my one question, there'll be, there'll be more once my brain wraps and processes. Um, we have a, a mental health crisis and, and for many reasons, but one being the fact that there are such long wait lists. There are not enough providers to meet the demand. And, and so even when we get the, the federal funding, do, is there a plan or a partnership? If not, um, how can we create one? We don't, we don't have enough providers to meet the demand, and this is gonna require such an intensive wraparound, a specialized training skill set, um, just the dual diagnosis. There's a lot that goes, goes into this in the trauma supportive care. Is, as soon as I saw, I was like, that, I, I want this built like yesterday, right? Like, we desperately need this. I'm worried if there is a caveat around them staying in the housing that is dependent upon them going into the care because of the care provider shortage. So that is, that is one, one question I have. And then how do we keep that pipeline going? Um, of, of making sure we have the services that they need so that they can stay in there? Because if, as we're looking at things like the CRU that is doing a phenomenal job, but then when they get out, that there's like a three-month, four-month waiting list for a BCM, and so then the people who are so invested in that care are lapsing back because they felt forgotten, or they've, they've given up hope. Um, and so, I don't expect you to have answers to all of that now, but this is more like, how do we?
Yeah.
Yeah, this was absolutely something we were working backwards from. The problems you're identifying are so myriad, and, and I think it's a struggle we've had in homeless services. For instance, I've been working this career for fifteen years, and starting like in our case management models, it felt fifteen years ago like we could just quote-unquote, put a case manager, and we could navigate the system of care together. And as I've just watched our case management system kind of fray across the country, the reality is that no offense to our case managers, they're doing, you know, God's work, but it's, it's not enough. We need to not rely on our referral systems. If we're relying on our referral systems, we're, we're waiting in line for a primary care visit, we don't get access to nursing, we want the medical management we, we have could be a little bit delayed, and that could be a crisis moment for people in deep trauma. So Housing First comes alongside that and says, we need to have assertive engagement, which means to me, two things. One, you need to have, you need to work backwards from what's access to care, which means you have to build a bigger team. And that team should exist on-site. And lastly, if we're relying just on Medicaid billing codes, we're working backwards from what our Medicaid restrictions are versus what that person needs. Now, sometimes, and a lot of times, those overlap, right? And we're able to, to figure that out. But if we want to be assertive, we need to get out of our office. We need to be truly community-based care, and sometimes that works within our community settings to build, and sometimes it doesn't. So this is why you're seeing that charitable number on our supportive services slide for budget, knowing that, and if Mandy was here, uh, upfront talking about Safe Harbor's role, she's been so loud of like, not all this is gonna work in Medicaid, we have to work backwards from the client needs. So, I think you're exactly right, and we've kind of, our, I feel for all of our case managers and all the ones I've, I've worked with over my years, because it's such a hard job right now navigating a broken referral system.
And to your point, we have to re-engineer the training, uh, for behavioral health specialists. And, and we have thoughts as to how to do that, for sure. We did it with our school of nursing that we put over at Wayne. We knew we had a nursing shortage coming, so we started a school of nursing. A lot easier um, to do that than it is to these four and six and sometimes seven-year programs with a master's degree prepared. Uh, working with universities and working with other, um, local entities, we have to think about a different way to allow people to be trained in this specialty. We have to look at wages.
Yep.
To be, you know, to, because the cost of education versus what they earn do not match up. So you bring up an excellent point, it certainly is a concern. My concern is, I think we'll have a lot of people who want to be involved in this, but what do they leave behind? To, to go do this work, because this is new work and this is different work. And, and keep up with all the pace. But your point is well-taken and well-heard, and one of our other tenants in our, in our new community development corporation is career development. And this is one of the careers that we have to work together as a community to try to foster.
Was there opportunity for, for like a peer specialist model within this model?
Yeah, so we will be hiring peer specialists, yep. You can see listed, listed up there that we're.
Those who've like successfully like stayed in the permanent housing and maybe been able to stabilize themselves assisting others within that process.
And when we, when we're responding to the RFQ, um, or we're putting it out there through our, our governance model, that was something that we were asking, is we wanted people, we were pretty prescriptive, to be honest, of what we were looking for, which is we didn't want to see, um, uh, this will be a wonky answer, we, we didn't want to see like a rapid-rearing housing model, or like some, some tried-and-true methods, like, no, we want to see you actually combine behavioral health services and homeless services. And we specifically named peer specialists as, as a tried-and-true research method. And Safe Harbor rose to the top since they're already deeply committed to not just having peer specialists on staff, but they're one of the trainers um, around here of doing the CPS trainings.
That's a great question. Comment.
I was just wondering, a few, um, great presentations, by the way. If you, it says, um, one hundred and one to one hundred and twenty-seven households. What's the definition of a household? And, um, once you determine, how do you, how we determine like what people will go into the houses, and how long are they allowed to stay, once, what's that process?
Yeah, great question. Um, so, right now, and people experiencing chronic homelessness in Erie County, about ten percent of them are families. Families referring to any, any combination. So for HUD-based rules, you get to define what your house, what your family is. So that could be, you know, grandma and, and three kids, it could be, you know, uh, two adults. So about ten percent we're seeing experiencing chronic homelessness are families. So ninety percent are single adults. And so that's what we're working backwards from of, especially in our first phase here, if we're gonna be building something, especially with, uh, construction costs, looking at how they are, we're gonna be building one-bedrooms and working backwards from that ninety percent figure, we're single adults. And one thing maybe we haven't said it yet is, is they'll be signing a lease. So, one way to look at this is if anyone here remembers their first apartment, this is that exact same experience. You're gonna be signing a lease, you're gonna be going down, sitting, have someone walk you through what that lease looks like. Um, and when you sign it, it's, that apartment is, is yours for as long as you obey your lease. And then at the end of that renewal period, you'll have, just like I did in my first apartment, you'll have that conversation, do I want to stay here another year? Is this still the care that I need? Um, and what we see kind of nationally is people stay in housing like this around five years. That's not a requirement, but one of the kind of goals in here is, is that your community-based care team is doing their job of getting to know you, getting to know your needs, building a, a client plan that we're working through together and co-creating your future. And that future might need going somewhere else. For some folks, it doesn't, you know, they might pass away in their unit, however many years later, it's meant to be permanent, but the goal is to work with you individually and find out what your definition of community is, your definition of health, and then work with you towards that. But on average, folks will stay maybe five years or so.
Who's the oversea, like, who's the landlord? If you have this many, like, people, who's the technical landlord?
Yeah, so we, um, will certainly raise our hand as the Build Community Development Corporation to be the property managers. And manage that, with a, you know, with a property manager, they'll be staffing on-site. Uh, but Build CDC, probably, and, and we're still working out the details on that, we will be the owner of the rehab building, the schoolhouse building. Uh, once CHN gets done, we most likely will take over ownership of that and manage both properties. So it'll be Build Community Development Corporation.
Is, is Build a five-oh-one C two?
It is. It is, yeah. We're gonna need a lot of help. You know, I mean, the, you know, finding the right property manager, the right resident managers, I mean, you know, this will create some jobs in the community for sure, so.
I have a comment, but I'm gonna wait till other council members.
I just keep firing off questions.
I'm so excited, and I thank you. But what can we do in the meantime?
Yeah.
Can we talk about, um, the place that they're going to be staying, uh, overnight this winter?
I actually think, and Lana is here, and I'm not sure if Lana wants to come up and respond, but the Community Resilience Center that the county is going to be opening as part of our neighbor's place is a wonderful idea. Instead of going school gym to school gym this winter, the Community Resilience Center will be the, that location all winter long. And that will be great for that population. There'll be more beds, less waiting in line, and less remember, remembering, am I supposed to go to the church tonight? Am I supposed to go to MHA tonight? So Lana, thank you for being here.
Um, thank you. And, you know, I think it does take an all-of-the-above approach because no one solution is going to work for this problem, so. Um, we're really happy to have all the different partnerships, but yes, the Community Resilience Center is set to work with the churches and the existing work that has been going on for the past ten years to try to provide that as a resource for our community through this winter.
Thank you. How will they get there? Like, is there going to be like a bus shuttle or something that will be taking them there if they can't walk all that way?
Last year, they did, uh, have an arrangement with EMTA. Last year, they did have an arrangement with EMTA, and we do work closely with them. So Jeremy from the head of the EMTA has been at all of our meetings, and we are working on scheduling pickups. Of course, it probably won't meet the needs of everyone because it's not a cab or an on-demand service, but yes, we are working with EMTA to make sure that there is shuttles for places that we know people to be just prior to the opening of the Community Resilience Center for the night.
Does everyone know where that, where it's going to be? Maybe the address?
Yes, it is on 16th and Wallace, so it's formerly the Work Relief Center or the Community Correction Center. It does have its own separate entrance, but, you know, we've offered tours of it too, and everyone's, if you would like to see that, I'd be happy to set up a tour for you as well. It has a lot of, a lot of functional space. A lot of the churches that were utilized previously didn't have access to multiple showers or restrooms, places to store personal belongings, you know, just a place to sit down and have some food. People can also meet with their already established or with newly established service providers. So, you know, we're looking, again, as this, as another way that we can meet part of the need in our community.
If anyone needs a chance to volunteer, December 4th through the 11th, I know a guy that's responsible for coordinating that week. Has not filled out his schedule at his church.
It really, you know, and again, all the accolades go to the churches and the folks that are really the ones who have been doing this. The volunteers are aging, so certainly a call-out to any available volunteers is something that we're also working on too. And it's been great to utilize some of the existing relationships and resources to continue those messages anywhere we can, right?
I think it's also worth noting, the crisis response unit is so important to all of this, but also, do you want to talk about, Safe Harbor has agreed, or one of you, to start services even before the building is done, so that's also going to help not only with transitioning people into the building, but with the current need.
Yeah, working really close with Lana and her team, you know, to be sure. But a lot of the services that you can do with street outreach, you know, for certain, our goal is to have a vehicle in, before we even have the apartments open, so if someone does need a ride, we can, we can help out with that. They need a medical appointment that they can't get to, we can help with that. So some of these services can be turned on before we're open. And some of these services, let's be fair, they do exist. You know, Lana's team and ECCM, you know, there's a lot of services that are being provided, but the more people working together, the more collaborative we are, the more services that we can provide. But I have to say, I give the county executive and Lana a lot of credit, because you've been in the shelters the way they've been, and what this is, it's night and day for the resident to come in there at night and really have, I think you're doubling the capacity, first of all. There is nothing worse than on a winter night when it's 20 degrees and the first 38 people are then turned, you know, they're in and the rest of them are, you know, have nowhere to go. So this will really help that. It's a great question, because we are not, you know, we have a lot of work to do. We think in some ways we're moving fast, but to your point, it's not fast enough. I mean, we need these tomorrow, but that's not going to happen.
I see where it says Phase 2 community housing, and then it says small multifamily properties acquired and renovated. Does that mean like you are going to be trying to find properties that, okay? Because I also just wanted to comment that, you know, since I've been on council, I've seen an uptick in our vacant property lots going to out-of-state people. So I would recommend that everyone keep their eyes on that.
Right behind me is Hannah Moran, she is dogging it. Hannah is looking for any, any properties that do come for sale, and you're right, Chris Groner has worked and walked for some of the blighted properties that you have, torn-down property, and they're empty properties, and what can we do with those? So it's, you know, it's an enormous amount of work, but we're with you 100% to try to keep finding properties and get them in the right hands with the right people. We have a construction trades program going on over at ECAT right now, and that's an on-the-job training process. So we want the folks that we're training to be working on these properties and converting them quickly and getting them affordable and safe. But yeah, there's a big lift.
I just, I'm somebody who I would prefer that the properties go to people who are trying to do things for the community, trying to make our community better for the next generation, and not just people who come in and buy it up and then turn around and sell it to our community for five, 10 times more. That's not okay in my eyes when you're getting the piece of land for $250. So let's just hope that more people are getting my sentiments on looking and making sure that we know what's coming in and out of our community, because once we don't have access to it and it doesn't belong to our city, we have no more control over it.
100%, 100%.
Does anybody else have anything to comment or question?
I'll leave you alone pretty soon. Just, so I'm looking at the supportive services, my brain keeps going back to the sustainability, like how do we, how do we make sure that this stays within the feasibility realm and don't become so dependent on like Medicaid? Because I could see like where it'd be a really easy slope to go right there, and that is such a crunch system right now, especially in Erie. So I'm, and some of these we're going to have to figure out along the way. Grant model, like, you know, getting a lot in there, philanthropy, but I guess as we kind of go, that would be my biggest curiosity is how do we keep this from becoming, you have to have insurance to stay here, because we can't afford for you to not.
I'll start on, imagine you'll add on. I mean, one thing was really important for the project team, what became Housing First Erie to say is like, this is not trying to reallocate someone else's dollars towards this services spot, which is exactly right and makes a hard task to be additive then. And so I think a little bit is going to have to be lived into, which is a little scary. So one thing we're trying to figure out, just like we mentioned earlier, is, well, once we live into this, what can we build? What level of innovation and creativity is there? Which there's the current Medicaid environment, and there's kind of the Medicaid environment that's quickly coming towards us, as a lot of states, Pennsylvania included, are getting more aggressive on health-related social needs funding. So there's that, but that won't be 100%. Now, I've spent a long time in homeless services where it's your job to fill every gap through another grant. And so there are no promises in nonprofit life, as everyone here knows. Karen's now had to get grant reports from me in two different states. But that's how we kind of build our current model, is by thinking like, what can I get right now? What can I get right now? And so it's a good way of building a certain status quo and then probably maintain it. One thing we're challenging ourselves with is what it'll look like to look 10 years ahead and to build, not quite an endowment, but something like that, because we know there's going to be gaps. And there's how those gaps look today, and they're going to look very different three years from now and three years after that. So what it'll look like, you know, through the leadership of Infinite Erie and the Community Foundation, if we look 10 years ahead, put kind of some fight together there that we allow the Housing First Erie Governance Board, which these three are on it, and Renee included, to kind of vote each year, how are we going to fill those gaps? One of the things, and everything Wyatt said is spot-on, we have three people on our team at our Hammond Health Foundation right now, whose main job is community outreach and street outreach and getting people enrolled in some sort of health insurance. What we don't want is anyone to not have health insurance. But the job is also, if they're on Medicaid, to find a way to get them off Medicaid and into commercial insurance and get them into Penny. And so UPMC, I mean, I work for the Hammond Health Foundation, but I'm in the executive team of UPMC, leading with my chin here. UPMC for you has about 68% of the market in the City of Erie for Medicaid. Their Pathways to Work program is very successful right now. A lot of folks at ECAT who are going through different training programs that they're paying for, get them off of Medicaid into commercial insurance. So the fewer people on Medicaid and the more people who are self-sustaining with a self-sustaining wage, then things start to come forward. Of our, we'll have 175 graduates of our School of Nursing. I would say the majority of them, if nothing else, are housing insecure. And some, some were doing coach surfing during the process of them getting their RN degree. They're not making $35 an hour, they're getting $10,000 signing bonuses, they're getting a new home, so this is working. Those folks who live in Washington Square, I believe that a lot of them can get into the workforce and get off of Medicaid and get off the public rolls and get into a sustainable wage for them or their family. I think some of them will get back with their families when they get into recovery. So the sky's the limit in terms of what we can do there, but it's slow. So patience is important.
We're also swimming the problem upstream too. As we're able to identify the individuals, we're looking at where do we know them from other systems? And when we are able to see that, we can see how we can prevent some of those predictable conditions that result in the homelessness. So what we're doing is we're doing more of a warm handoff from some of the correctional facilities. We're looking at how we can, some of the definitions of location of services for some of the Medicaid-funded services have been expanded to include locations that are just the person's dwelling, whatever that may be, including homelessness. So those are recent changes that have come out, so, you know, those are going to be part of our provider outlets. We're working with the, all of the different places that are providing educational opportunities to again try to help those people to get off of the medical assistance, if that's what their goal is, if they're not, you know, the chronically individuals who might have more difficulty with some of that too, and to provide those opportunities. So again, it's an all-of-the-above approach, and this is why we're all very excited to be able to work together, because it really is wonderful, like Wyatt had mentioned, you don't have this opportunity in a lot of communities, so we really appreciate everybody's working together on it.
Does anyone else on council have anything?
Wyatt, how is Boise, Idaho doing right now? Is it doing okay?
So the process we mentioned before of, you know, us working on what became New Path Community Housing, it was 40 units. It was 40 units for chronic homelessness, and there's some great studies that have happened year after year that we're still looking at. And one of them is showing what five years has looked like for that, for that housing development. And they've seen it, they've seen 90% stability of people coming through, and every single year they do a cost accounting. And so every single year they're saving the community $2 million. So it's now saving the taxpayers about $10 million, which the people of Idaho love. But it didn't stop there. Now, fast forward, the city and through its all its partners has committed to doing 250 units. So it's already done two properties, one for veterans, one for chronic homelessness, and this was successful enough that they're going to keep going. So now they have a pipeline of five other buildings to keep going, because the rent is now about $3,000 for an apartment in Boise, so it's only possible to do it by a very deliberate partnership-based approach. So this is again why we're working backwards for some things that places like Boise and others have learned of, let's work backwards from a pipeline, knowing that there are a lot of systems of care, let's get a little messy, let's understand how they all work. Let's live into this model with these first 72 units, because they're still alive. But we're going to learn a lot of lessons, and it might teach us on how to approach that next project even more with a more of a fine tooth.
I think one of the other things that happened in the City of Boise was that once the first building was built, New Path, then the partnership said, "Okay, what's our next priority?" And that became family homelessness. So shift, you know, they had gelled together as a group and saw that they could do something, and then they shifted to the next priority. And I think that's really something that we're thinking about too as a partnership. We have to set our sights on the short term and the 72 units, but we know there's a lot more work to be done.
Yeah, I was going to comment on the fact that, I know that there's a lot of families, whether it's single-family households or just grandparents with grandchildren. I mean, our community has had a lot of opioid deaths, and that leaves a lot of families traumatized and people raising children that you wouldn't expect to be raising. So I just wanted to thank you all for everything that you presented to us, and I'm really happy that we're all collectively working together to try to correct some of these issues we're having in our community. I know that we're very welcoming in our community, and I know that a lot of people feel that, and that's why they come here. We have a lot of services, so I'm hoping this will be one asset that our community will drastically benefit from. And I'm happy that the heating shelters are being expanded, because as you said, our winters are pretty brutal, and it is unfortunate if you have to turn someone away. I understand that homelessness is something that is a situation that if people could prevent, they would, but sometimes you're one sickness, one illness, one paycheck away from really having some serious ripple effects happen to your family or yourself. So I definitely want to see additional information and things of that nature on this side. I care about housing. I'm somebody who I believe housing is a human right, so I think everybody deserves a home.
Totally agree.
So if anybody else on council is good, I will adjourn the meeting. I like to be respectful of people's time, keep it to an hour, and I think we're a little over. But I do appreciate everything you presented, because I know our community will definitely benefit, even if it's only 72 right now, 2027, but I'll be here to make sure that happens.
We appreciate city council, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, thank you.